Okay, welcome. We'll call the July 18, 2018 border selectmen's meeting to order. Item one, to approve the border selectmen minutes of June 6, 2018 and July 27, 2018, which is a special meeting. Can I get a motion to approve?
Recommend approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Can I get a motion to add a green use application for Wolfstock?
Make a motion, we add that to the agenda?
Second aye.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item two, you need a motion to go into executive session and discuss pending tax appeals. We'll invite in Attorney Perito to discuss.
Make a motion, we go into executive session.
Second aye.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any motion to go back into regular session?
Motion to return to regular session.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Back in regular session. For the record, no votes were taken while on executive session. Can I get a motion to approve the proposed tax settlement for Kirkham Mutual Housing?
Make a motion, we approve the proposal.
Second aye.
All right, any discussion? Hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item three, to consider an if-appropriate approval request from Fire Chief Thomas Mahoney to trade in two 2003 and one 2005 Striker stair chairs for a trade-in value of $3,600. We have Chief Mahoney was unable to make it tonight. We do have a letter in our packets from him with the appraisal price for these chairs. And I think this is the trade-in value and then they'll purchase some new chairs, correct?
Correct.
Chief, you have any?
Yeah.
Jack, you have any?
Got to have these. 2003, that means I bought them.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second aye.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item four, to consider an if-appropriate approval request from Otto Berger, lead tradesman, to waive the bid for the purchase of a 2016 Ford Transit van in the amount of $22,520. Otto?
Yeah, I'm requesting the waiver of bid for 2016 Ford Transit van for the $22,520. That's going to replace the vehicle that had to come off the road about three months ago. There was a 2008, it was all rotted out, and we're one vehicle down. Vehicle will be purchased from Ford of Branford. This will be the third one that we have gotten from there. And it's good condition, low mileage.
And we've had this, went through our town mechanics, went through the van as well, inspected it.
Yeah, it has been inspected by the town as well. So everything seems to be in good condition.
So we've actually purchased, as Otto said, this is our third Transit van that we've had. We've had some luck. We've always bought them, a couple years old, and for the, just using it in town, we've realized some savings by going with a year or two-year-old vehicle. Get good value. Any other questions? If not, entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion, we approve. Good job, Otto.
Second aye.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Item five, to consider an if-appropriate approval request from Gary Zalinski, highway supervisor, to waive the bid for the purchase of catch basin cleaning services in the amount of $19.50 per basin. Gary?
Yeah, requesting that we waive bid require to issue a purchase order to Shawvac Services to perform catch basin cleaning for approximately 2,000 catch basins townwide in the amount of $19.50 per basin. Shawvac has quoted $1.10 lower than their croc bid of $20.60 in the past, so actually it was lower than even the lowest bidder at Janet Sweeping at $19.99 per basin.
So I think you negotiated this price last year. They offered to hold that price for their next, going forward, at $19.50 per basin. So I think we just requested at that. We're mandated under state stormwater permit to clean out our catch basins annually.
You're happy with the work they did last year?
Yeah, yeah, satisfied. They respond quickly.
I'll make a motion, we approve.
I second that motion.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item six, to consider an if-appropriate abate the taxes on the following properties. Town of Branford, 26 Church Street, bill number 2017-01-000866, in amount of $4,946.14. 28 Church Street, bill number 2017-1-000867, in amount of $1,784.28. That is the town-owned property that we purchased. This was adjacent to the community house project. Also, we have hospice. We do this annually. I'll just read the addresses in the dollar mouth. 30 Double Beach Road for $1,626.76. Double Beach Road for $257.76. 34A Double Beach Road, $2,053.50. 34 Double Beach Road, $1,832.96. 26 Double Beach Road, $1,526.52. 191 Short Beach Road for $3,055.90. And then the last statement is for Shoreline Community Church. This is on 9 Business Park Drive, 9-2, for $2,016.26. 9 Business Park Drive, Unit 9-1, for $2,405.33. 9 Business Park Drive, Unit 9-3, for $1,520.78. 9 Business Park Drive, Unit 9-4, for $1,480.70. You can either break those up separately, or if you want to make one motion to approve all of the abatements as read, we can do that.
Excuse me, I have one correction to that. I'm sorry, for Business Park, 9 Business Park Drive, 9-1, the amount actually should be $4,810.66. That was only for half the year.
Okay. So correction, as stated, for 9-1, the amount is for the full year of $4,810.66.
I'll make a motion, we do it all at once.
I agree.
All right.
And just a question.
Yep.
Does Jim see this coming? Like when we're doing the budget, does he already know?
Yeah, well, we, yes, well, we do budget, you know, we account for appeals and things like that.
Right, okay.
So, as we moved in second, any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Actually, you know what? I just want to state one correction for the record. I believe I said we approved the board of selectmen minutes for the July 27, 2018 meeting. It was actually June 27, 2018.
The minutes were slightly delayed.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Item seven, reappointments. Cable Advisory Council, Margot Hardenberg, term to expire June 30, 2020.
Make a motion, we approve?
Second aye.
Discussion, hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Appointments. Cable Advisory Council, J.C. Wyatt, to fill a vacancy, term to expire June 30, 2020.
Make a motion, we approve?
Second aye.
Discussion, hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item nine, green use, to consider an if-appropriate approval request from Shoreline Community Church for the use of the town green on Wednesday, October 31, 2018, from 5:30 p.m. to 8 p.m. to hold a Light the Night Halloween event.
Make a motion, we approve?
Second aye.
Discussion, hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Don't forget this one.
All right. Yeah, a motion to approve the green use application for the animal shelter for the use of the town green to hold the annual Wolfstock on Saturday, August 11, 2018, and approve an exemption pursuant to Section 118-25 and allow animals on the town green.
Make a motion, we approve?
August 11?
August 11, yes.
That's my birthday. Definitely approve that.
All right. We're doing it for your birthday.
Happy birthday, Joe.
You have to get a dog, though.
No, go there, Jack.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item 10 is a germit, but do we have any other business?
I'll allow probably not.
Yes.
Good afternoon.
My name is Sandy Stoddard. I live at Seven High Island in the Thimbles. I'm starting in four weeks. I'm starting my 71st year out there. But we, I was talking to the first selectman a while ago along with Mr. Warner, and we had nice discussions, and I liked where things were going. We had our Thimble Island Association meeting Sunday, and some of the niggling problems that are always vexing us every year are still there. And frankly, we got talking about the meetings that we had with the first selectman, and we thought, well, maybe what we should do is see if we can engage the board of selectmen to help us not solve them, but sort of, you know, who do we talk to? Because we get runarounds, you know, we talk to this department and that department, and everyone goes, you know, pointing fingers kind of thing. So that's really pretty much what we're sort of starting a dialogue with. We're talking with Jamie. He was not really familiar with the Thimble Island Association. We had past first selectmen, of course, who were Creegers, so they didn't need, you know, we knew John and Unc. So anyway, so that's pretty much the purpose of why I'm here. And if it's okay, I'll get, I'll have Tracy Everson, the secretary, to come up, and she's got more sort of details. But we're trying to be, you know, let's.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Tracy Everson. I'm a fourth-generation islander with a home on Governors. I'm also the secretary at the Thimble Islands Association. There are 74 homes in the Thimbles on 22 islands with an assessed property value of $48 million. As islanders, we contribute approximately $1.4 million in revenue to the town of Branford. We're looking to work collaboratively with the town leaders to improve the village of Stony Creek. There are many competing interests in the summer months in a very small area. Limited parking has been an issue for over a century. We, as taxpayers and seasonal residents, compete for public parking. Stony Creek has become a draw for tourists with three tour boats that operate around the islands. They utilize town dock space at a cost, as I understand it, of $600 per boat a season. There's little space left for islanders to tie up a boat at a public dock when coming ashore, given the yokes on the docks and the competition for the limited space. We, as representatives of the Thimble Island Association, are asking to meet with the stakeholders at a community meeting on a date as yet to be determined with the board of selectmen, also perhaps the police and fire chiefs and members of the representative town meeting to discuss our concerns. With the town in the process of drafting a new plan of conservation and development, the timing could not be better. Our goal is to identify and find solutions. Perhaps the town would even consider creating a task force with all stakeholders in the village of Stony Creek, the islanders, the Stony Creek Association, the tour boat operators, and the commercial interests, such as the fishermen and construction crews. Thank you for listening, and I'll give my comments, a copy of my comments to the clerk with my contact information. I'm also a Branford resident, so I'm a dual taxpayer.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Just one quick comment on that. I did, you know, meet with a couple of individuals, as stated. I know the primary concern, as stated, was, our discussion center a lot around parking. I believe the town did, as we know, that the police commission, the traffic authority oversees parking restrictions, designated no parking. And I believe previously they had done a study looking at that, and I was going to try to find that study. It was referenced to me by our town engineer at the time, that they did look at it, they did implement some of the things to try to maximize the allowable parking spaces. Said there may be some areas further down Thimble Island that could be, you know, marked out for painting. However, she's, the recollection was that pretty much that general area around the dock down in the beach was pretty much maxed out for public parking. I know one of the other things that was discussed is having resident parking-only stickers down there. You know, I know that's come up before. I know the, previously, the police commission did not, you know, look favorably on doing that in certain areas because it becomes a enforcement issue in looking at that. But certainly with the amount of activity that's happening down there, I understand that, like you said, there are competing interests. You mentioned the plan of conservation development. I believe it's tomorrow night at 5 o'clock, there's a meeting. I encourage you, if you haven't read the draft yet, it is available online. You can read the draft comments that are on there and, you know, perhaps provide, you know, some testimony. If not, if you can't make it, you can still submit it in writing. The time may have, I think there was a deadline to it, but if you can get it to the town planner, perhaps they can present those to the commission, the steering committee that'll be reviewing it. But the meeting is, I believe, 5 o'clock. Is it here?
In the building.
It's in the firehouse, yeah, so here at 5 o'clock tomorrow.
Hello, First Selectman of Branford. You know me, my name is Ben Getch. I'm here with this group tonight. I'm also a third-generation Thimble Islander from High Island. One of the things that we discussed at the annual meeting this year was with some of the recent aquacultural development. Now, I've expressed to you my views on this topic before, so in the interest of time, I won't go over it again. But I will say that there are concerns coming now from multiple stakeholders, island residents, those that use the islands, about some of this development. I believe that the state's purchase of the private shell fishing ground in Branford's jurisdictional waters should be challenged. I believe I've provided the town with the legal theory that would accomplish that. I know the town attorney had reviewed that. I have spoken with him a number of times about it, but have never really received a satisfactory answer, has always just been kind of, oh, we're looking into it, or something to that effect. I would encourage the selectmen to pursue this perhaps more vigorously now, as it will only create more complications in the future. There are already a number of these aquacultural installations now that have been permitted, that are in around, very close, right up into the shores of some of these islands. Some of these permits were granted without consultation from the town or abutting landowners, and they do provide, they do create perhaps navigational hazards or other things of concern. But this is something that I think as an association, the Thimble Island Association is concerned about and is also willing to engage the selectmen further on, if you are so amenable to that. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. And just to follow up on that, I believe we had a discussion, I did have Attorney Cretella review that, what you had provided. I know you had some discussions with them. At that time, we decided it wasn't in the best interest of the town to engage the state in a lawsuit over the property. However, I think you also mentioned concerns that you just repeated tonight with the program that they have. I did have a conversation with representative from DEP, our aquaculture.
Dave Carey.
Dave Carey, as well as regarding the issues and some of the things that you brought to light. He, I believe it was Stonington, it was further down the shore, they have a, Yukon did a presentation of what their program is going to be in that area and what they're trying to do, and they shared that with me. And I asked, perhaps they can do a, is that it? Time over?
Sorry about that.
You're just tired.
My birthday again.
But I plan on inviting them to town and have a public meeting where they can then explain what their vision is and their use for the shellfish beds that they now own.
Well, it's not just a matter of the...
Benny, you mind just coming up here, because the TV won't pick you up?
I don't think it's just a matter of what their plans are. I believe that should be out in the open, in the public. But it's also a matter of the fact that there is a statute that protects Branford from those that would seek to control shellfish grounds without paying taxes. Now, yes, the state is exempt from paying taxes in the town of Branford, but the statute says very clearly, if no taxes are paid, then it will shall revert back to the town of Branford. The state should not be allowed to move into Branford's jurisdictional waters and play, essentially, real estate broker here. These are near-shore interests that were granted under the original jurisdiction of this town, and it is a complete disrespect to the town of Branford, its jurisdictional rights, for the town to let this kind of encroachment into its municipal waters to stand. That's not to say this program shouldn't happen. Perhaps there are many merits to this program, and their plans maybe have a place that they could fit into our community. But I do believe that that program, whatever it is, should be administered with Branford's interests in mind. I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, any other comments? All right, well, thank you. We look forward to continuing. Look forward to continuing the dialogue.
Good evening. Lawrence Warner from Massachusetts and Dogfish Island. One item that we have expressed some concern about, and I have mentioned to you about this, Jamie, was tying up boats. There's an area to the, as you drive out on the Stony Creek Dock on the right, the furthest dock out is sort of allocated to tour boats. The second dock is mixed with a fireboat. The second two docks are to be short-term tie-up. Residents load, unload, things like that. The problem we've had is people that don't have a slip or something else decide that they're going to use this as their tie-up place, meaning overnight, they might leave on Sunday, leave their boat there until the following weekend. This makes it very difficult for islanders to load, unload, pick up passengers, things like that. It is posted, and there are even fines posted. And what I'm hoping is, some of our members have asked and told that it's an ordinance, but we don't enforce it. And I'm trying to figure out why isn't it enforced when the penalties are already posted on the sign. I've talked to the, I don't know what their actual description is, but I will call them police assistants, meter maids, I don't know what, but they're on the Stony Creek Dock, I believe, seven days a week. And I've asked them about it, and they said they've ticketed boats, and the police department said, "Don't do that." So we're all a bit confused about this, and trying to figure out how to get to the bottom of this, because it's already posted. I mean, this is something just, how do we get it enforced?
Yeah, right. And we did increase, as we talked, added some additional signage, painted on the last season, trying to, I know that was an issue. I believe they did ticket some boats, but I could certainly follow up with the police chief and as far as, you know, what the policy is within the department. If there's an ordinance there, if it's not being followed, you know, I could certainly look into that further.
Well, it'd be greatly appreciated because our season is very short, as you know.
Yeah.
And so for what we do pay in taxes and things, it'd be nice to get, I mean, some of these things that we're hoping for might be very long distant, but this one, I would think, would be a very simple, easy-to-address type item. I mean, the ticketing agents, whoever they are, could very easily, say 8 o'clock in the morning, the boat's there, 2:00 in the afternoon, the boat's still there, he gets a ticket, whatever it might be. I mean, everything is in place, so it would just be a case of enforcement. And that's what we're kind of looking for. Lots of other things, but this is the one item for today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a quick thing to say. My name's Cindy Tower, and I live in Branford. And my family has had a cottage since the '60s on Governors Island that they bought for $5,000, which I just thought I should just tell you because it's so shocking how times have changed. But one statistic you might not be aware of is that the 11 houses on Governors Island, 15 people of the, have houses in Branford from that one island alone. And they go back and forth to go to stop and shop, and then you have to run home and mow the lawn in Branford. So the amount of islanders actually are becoming Branford people as well. And this is a new demographic. There's a real connection, and I, and it's growing. And that's something I just wasn't sure you knew about and wanted to mention for the dock stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I appreciate it. All right. Any other comments? All right. With that, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion we adjourn.
I second that.
All in favor say aye.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.